Thursday, November 4th, 2021, meeting of the Carthage City Council to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Knappel?
Here.
Councilman Backcock?
Here.
Councilman Evil?
Here.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reese?
Here.
City Attorney Mullins?
Here.
Thank you. The approval of the minutes, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the Wednesday?
Motion approved.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. We don't have any bills over 10,000, so there's no consideration there. Do we have any citizens from here in Carthage who would like to speak about any matters here? Well, if there's someone from Carthage first, anybody here first before out of town? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Phil.
Oh, no, forgive me, I'm gonna do this quickly. Our church is in revival and I really wanna go there, so because I leave, don't think that I think this is a blessing. I got a handout for you. And what I wanted to talk to you guys about, if you want to just... I want to be the note. Part of the chamber's function is to support tourism in the area. And we have Civil War markers that are very vital, I think, to our tourism and people that come and visit. And I have people that come in the chamber all the time and they're looking for them. And we have one at Roan Ferry, which is a $200 a year cost. It's paid for by the county and it has been since 2009 when they were all put in. We have one at the Courthouse and Citizens Bank. They volunteer to pay that $200 a year fee and they've been doing that since 2009. And we have one at the Chamber, and the Chamber of Commerce volunteered to pay the $200 a year fee since its installation in 2009. We have one on For Battery Hill that was installed up near the hospital on that road there. And basically, you can read through that, see the emails. Been talking back and forth with Mr. Drew Gruber with the Civil War Trails Commission. And we'd like to see if you guys would consider... Mayor David Bowman, he had that one installed back in 2009. And subsequent mayors had went ahead and paid the $200 a year fee. And in Mayor Dennis's administration, the second year into it, he quit paying the fee. And they left the marker here until September of 2019, trying, hoping that someone in the city would pick that back up. But it never was. They had discussions with Mayor Dennis, discussions with Mayor Smith. And anyway, in September, I think of 2019 or somewhere thereabouts, the marker was removed. And I'd like to see it replaced. The unfortunate thing is, is that it's a $200 a month cost to keep, a month, a year, $200 a year to keep it. At the time, when we were trying to get it replaced immediately, it was like a $1,700 cost. It's now $3,000. I don't know if you guys would consider doing that, but I'd like to ask you if you would to consider putting the Battery Hill marker back. Yes, sir.
What happened to the marker, that we would have to replace it? So, I mean, surely they didn't throw it away?
Uh, to, I would have to ask Mr. Gruber. He tells me they made every effort. In fact, I think the Tennessee State Tourism Director came down with him and talked to one of the mayors. I don't know if it was Mayor Dennis or Mayor Smith, about trying to get them to pay the $200 a year. And the marker, I don't know if they have it in storage or if it was destroyed. But I know it was not in bad shape when it left here.
I can clarify that because at the time, I believe the Historical Society was trying to work to get actually that into a historical site. And they would prefer to have had it, if they were gonna do that, at a different location than it was. So I don't think, I think there may have been some confusion at that time about what was...
They would...
Tell us about, who is that group, anyway? There, it's a private group?
It's a Civil War Trails organization and they put these markers in all the states that were involved in the Civil War. So it's all over the south and the northeast.
So they make a rental or money going forthwith it? Is that how it works?
I'm sorry.
So they make money on the renting of this sign? Or how do they, how does that work?
I don't know anything about their organization other than they do handle these markers. And as far as $200 a year, my suspicion is, is that that wouldn't be enough to take care of the staff that they have and everything. And they also run some of the Civil War sites in Virginia.
I think when we checked into it, it was a private organization and there was, if something happened to the marker, there was, there were costs. I don't quite remember. I remember, like I said, the previous administration decided not to keep it going. And then that's kind of what carried over here, too, so...
Well, the county's been paying theirs for 10 years, the chamber's been paying theirs for 10 years, and Citizens Bank has been paying it for 10 years. So I presume that they all think this is a valid and viable organization. Like I say, I would just ask that maybe the City of Carthage would pick it back up. Mayor David Bowman was the one that instituted this and he thought it was a good idea. Yes, sir.
Would it be the $3,000 to replace as well as the $200 per month? Or would it be just the $200 per month?
Uh, it would be $3,000 to get it put back since it was removed.
From us, though?
Well, whoever, or if there's a local group that wanted to donate it to the city. But somebody like the city has to take the responsibility for it. And if you had a group that wanted to donate, but it would be $3,000 to get it replaced.
That's the request.
That's the request, and then the $200 a month.
A year.
Or, I keep saying a month.
Same thing.
I'm sorry, it's a year. The $200 per year then to maintain it every year. And they come and, every year, and they come by and they check it. If it needs a screen, they replace it. If the picture is faded, they do that. The one at the Chamber there has been actually replaced twice that I know of. And I go out there and clean on it myself sometimes because it gets that... Yes, sir.
Civil War Trails is a 501(c)(3), so it's a nonprofit. It is a private organization, but they work basically like six different states. Looking at all up here on the computer, I don't know all this. Like six different states. And from what I do know, because I've talked to them a long time ago, like three, four years ago, it does bring tourists to town. People do the Civil War Trail, they wanna see different places and, you know, it's very historical, so... That's what it's about. And I'm gonna take a wild guess that the $200 a month is probably how they make money to keep their nonprofit going, so...
$200 a year?
Two hundred a year, I'm sorry.
I should, I should apologize. It's $200 a year.
$200 a year, I apologize.
Very little cost $200 a year. We just can't fathom that it would be yearly.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you all recall us having this discussion when they were telling us?
Yes.
We did.
We had this discussion a few years ago.
My apologies, then, I forgot about it.
But you remember, you do remember it, kinda. I just don't remember what happened with it, it just, I don't know what happened with it, I don't remember.
Yes, sir.
Could we do some research into finding out if it is in fact in stores? You said you're not sure if it got destroyed or...
Yeah, that part, I talked with Mr. Gruber actually about a week ago and discussed this. And I told him, I said, here's what I'll do for you. I'll go before the City Council, present the situation, and then they'll have to take the ball and run with it. And he was very amenable to that. And I'm sure Mr. Gruber at some point will be willing to come down and talk to you guys.
Do you know where the location is of the actual?
The last location, you can see those pictures that I included in the packet. It was at the corner of the landfill, is that called Landfield Drive or Landfield Lane? And where Hospital Drive. It was, it was right there on the corner off of the highway. The reason it was placed there is Battery Hill was, like, if you were standing at the marker, Battery Hill was right there. And also, the marker was on the bypass so that people would be able to find it easier. That's why they placed it exactly where they are. And it was put in a, it was in a concrete pad. And it sat there for a long time. In fact, I did not know it was missing until a guy from Pennsylvania came by and he said, I'm trying to find this marker. And I said, well, it's right up there, Landfield Lane. And he said, no, it's not. And I got in my car and drove up, I was gonna show him it was there, it was gone.
Is that part of the driveway that goes into the rest home?
No, it's right at the edge.
It circles around the nursing home, goes around the hospital.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe we have Mr. Gruber come talk to us about it all? Is that possible?
I do not mind contacting him and having him see if he can...
I mean, it might be something, there's several other things down the road, too. There's not just Battery Hill, there's a lot of Civil War history that's happened all over this place. So it might be worth looking into, just for, not just this, but other things, but...
And if he can't come, I'm sure he could Zoom in if you guys wanna come down to the Chamber. And you've got a good Zoom capability there, so he could do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for letting me...
I've got another question. Was it ever overgrown there?
Say it again.
Was it ever overgrown in that area?
No, not where it was sitting, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
I just wondered if they got...
If you're like me, probably, I pass some things every day and I forget they're there. And then when it gets gone, I go, oh, there was something in there. And I think that's where he... Anyway, thank you all for letting me talk. And I apologize, but I'm gonna leave.
Is this your stuff there?
Oh, yes, that is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak to any matter here in Citizens? Okay. Then we go to the mayor's report. There's several good things that have happened I'd like to bring to our attention because it's always good to, the good things that happen in our city. As you probably all know, we opened our new walking track in Dog Park a couple of weekends ago. It's a lot of excitement, a lot of doggies are out there using it already, a lot of people are using the walking track. We're thrilled that we had $25,000 from the Boyd Foundation to pay the whole Dog Park. Nothing came out of Citizens' funds. Great Halloween last weekend. Want to thank everybody who was involved in the planning, everybody who came to give out candy, all the little kids who came. It was just a good, fun organization-wide, all the way around. So we want to thank everyone who was involved with that. Saturday, we have a market fest. This is gonna be fun, it's gonna be at the city park this time, not at the walking track, but across at the swimming pool. We're going to have music, we're gonna have food. There's two, I think Donna's Kitchen and Hogtown BBQ are both gonna be there. We're gonna have a dog contest, which will be a lot of fun. They've got five or six categories from one month old up to the oldest dog there. So if you have dogs, anybody, just tell them to come, it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're gonna have prizes for everyone. Veterans Parade is Sunday at 2:00. That's very important that we come out and support the men and women who've served us so well. So 2:00, it lines up at, next to Power Metals and Main Street and Carmack, and they'll go all the way to downtown. Our INI, and Steve can speak a little bit more to that, but we started our water meter flow this past week. They put all the flow material into place, so that's very exciting. We're getting this study already off the ground and studying the rain flows through our sewers to figure out what we need to replace. It's not glamorous, but it keeps our, it keeps our toilets running, so that's very important. We have continued to reach out to our congressional representatives, all of our senators and representatives in DC. We are on a short list there to hopefully get some funds next year. We're on a short list of three or four cities in our, in our state. If that were to happen in 2022, we would get some great funds coming down for our infrastructure, for water and sewer. So we've got our fingers crossed about that. But I've been in constant contact with their representatives for Representative Rose Haggerty and Senator Black... Burn, Black, excuse me, Blackburn, sorry about that. So they are all on our side to try to get us some of that money. That would be wonderful because, ladies and gentlemen, it's gonna take millions and millions of dollars to replace the water and sewer lines in our, in our city. And it's not a happy thought, but if we do it slowly and methodically, we can do this. It's just, we're kind of 20 years behind. Some of these lines are 60, 70 years old that we have here. Corps of Engineers, another good one that Steve can talk more about. But we were so excited to find out earlier in the week that we, when we found out that the embankment down by the sewer plant was eroding further than we thought it was. And Steve Key brought amazing video of that and we gave it to the Corps of Engineer. We immediately got on their short list for the Nashville District to get money, again, from Congress to fix this. And we were told, to our excitement, last week by Zoom, that yes, indeed, we got that money. So the Corps of Engineers will come in, starting, I think, the week of the 15th, to do all the planning, all of the, up to $100,000 for engineering, planning and fees will be covered by them. Once we get into the construction part, it's a 35-65 match for the city. But that can be covered with some other grants or funds that we have. So we're going to get a huge project taken care of because if we don't get riprap down there on our shoreline, we don't want, as Steve said, a big vat of sewer floating down the Cumberland River somewhere in the future. So I think they, yes, sir.
We'd be taking care of the 35?
Yes, but that's just for construction. All of the engineer, they do, they come in and do everything. So it's a wonder, it's just really wonderful. You all know we kind of have federal coming, money coming down and it's gonna be distributed by TDEC. And I've had a few conversations, we had at the Upper Common Development District Board Meeting about a week ago, all the county and city mayors got into a very lively discussion about how that money will be distributed because it comes through the county. But as we all know, it's the cities who have all the infrastructure as far as sewer and water lines. So we're hoping that TDEC will put together a better arrangement than they have right now to how that money will be distributed to all the cities across the state. So we're in there fighting, trying to make sure that Carthage gets their fair share of that because we have two utilities here, as you know, and a huge amount of water and sewer lines. We're looking into some solar lights to put on our flagpoles, as someone has suggested. I think Derek is ordering those so that those will shine at night. We've tried solar in the ground before and they just go missing. And I guess people like those little solar lights. So that's, that's it for us for right now, so Danielle? Oh, excuse me, I said attorney, all right, bye-bye.
I don't know, per se, I got a report. I think my name's somewhere further down in the agenda there. So I don't know if I need to hold off until we get to that point or...
Yeah, just wait till that, who knows?
So we'll get to that, that's basically what I've been doing this whole month. I guess to let you know, too, there's been an issue that's continually came up and I don't know, I don't know if it's on there or not. But, and again, I've told you all numerous times that I represent the board as a whole. I don't represent the mayor, I don't represent one individual person, I represent the board as a whole. The mayors talked to me this month, I have spoken to... I do wanna get each one of y'all's cell phone numbers before I leave. I know I had them at one time, but I've lost them for whatever reason. But I think the mayor's of the opinion that I can't speak to you guys. I sent out an email to you guys.
No, that's not true, no.
Anyway. And I sent out an email explaining, kind of what had been explained. I've spoken to MTAAS about that issue. MTAAS has told me that I can speak to you guys about issues. I don't know, she had said something about, and I wanna know this because I don't know, I wasn't here. She said you guys voted that I wasn't supposed to, and not necessarily me, but any attorney was supposed to speak to you guys as a whole and not speak to anyone outside.
I think that's coming up in a resolution, so...
I don't know, whether it's a resolution or whether it's not, I've been told that. I've had conflicting stories. I don't know. And I sent out that email asking, and I don't know that anybody necessarily, I think I got Jesse's response, but I'm not sure that anybody clearly answered that part of it, whether that's happened or not happened.
Yes, sir.
Just to give clarification, make sure we're all on the same page here. This is a supervisor. We have other supervisors here. We're all allowed to talk to supervisors individually, this has come up a million times. We can all talk to them individually. Can we make decisions individually? Absolutely not, can't vote on it. But we can talk to supervisors individually. This is something that comes up every few months where one of us goes and talks to a supervisor and she gets upset about it, comes back and tries to make up a rule that doesn't exist. We go back to MTAAS, and MTAAS says, yes, supervisors can talk to council members individually. We encourage them to do so. Supervisors have encouraged us to learn more about their job individually as well. So just making sure everybody, we're all still on the same page on that. But I don't know why this keeps coming up. I'm sure it's gonna come up again a few more times, you know.
Is there anything else besides, some of this will be covered during business?
Well, whether it comes up, where it comes up, I just wanted to...
Okay.
And a lot of my, I guess, report comes up later in tonight's segment, I guess, so...
Okay, all right, thank you. Chief Davis is here?
Britt.
Britt?
Danielle's up.
I don't have anything.
I'm so sorry, Danielle?
That's okay, I don't have anything formal unless you guys have questions. I will talk to you guys at some point about construction and flood zones. I've got the lady from FEMA that's gonna type up everything, that kind of needs to go into that. So you guys are aware of all details and how complicated it is that way. And this comes up later, everybody knows exactly what federal guidelines are on it.
Can we talk to you individually about it?
Stop it. Okay. Now, Chief.
So I submitted our monthly reports, guys. Y'all have it in front of you if you have any questions, obviously. Please feel free to ask. The only other thing I know to pass on is this year for the budget, we put in the budget for our new patrol car. We ordered that, it is now in. Just, we have to cut the check, just so y'all know. And I'm gonna try to go pick it up thoroughly next week. So I don't know if y'all have to vote on that or not tonight to pass it. It's roughly $33,000 and change, so I don't know if y'all have to vote on that tonight or not. But I'm sure when we go pick it up, they're gonna want their money at some point in time.
Didn't we budget that for you already?
Yeah, it's already in the budget, yeah. So I just wanna give y'all a heads up, let y'all know about it. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Do we have to have a, because it's above 10, or it's above, what limit do we have to bid on, Scott?
It's above 10.
It goes through the state process. It's a state... It is a state bid, so it's already set.
Same goes for fire trucks as well?
I assume so. I don't know if that'd be a fact, I've never shot a fire truck.
Well, I just want, because it's a, it's a vehicle.
Yeah, so the way it works with us, like, we can look, like, if we want a Ford vehicle, then we click on Ford and it'll show like two or three different dealerships in the state that have the state bid. And then we can then look at the prices and has the set prices already there? So there are already set prices.
What's the price on that one?
It's, this one's an SUV, it's a 2021 Ford Explorer utility vehicle. So it's like $33,300 and some dollars.
Okay, so we, so we've already voted on the budget?
Yeah.
So we just need a vote to allow because it's over $10,000, or so. I'll motion that we go ahead and purchase it.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Chief.
I guess I'll have, y'all have any questions to me, please feel free to...
Okay. Public Works, Mr. Leslie?
I have nothing, I just got some questions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Water Sewer, is Derek, hello?
I don't have anything to report. I'll be back to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Water Plant, Rusty, oh, there you are, okay.
No formal report. I do wanna, I do wanna make y'all aware of some things you done. I'm not here gonna ask for money, so, but I do wanna say that some of the things that decisions that y'all gave us, give us the authority to do here lately, but I'm gonna give you the outcome of that. Y'all, y'all voted to allow me to buy a forklift here a while back and that opened some doors where I could, you know, get other pricing on chemicals by different delivery men. And I've made, I've got it now where, I've made a deal where we can save about $6,000 a year just on bleach, just for the, by the forklift. Another thing y'all voted on was to up our spending limits from $2,000 for supervisors and up to $10,000 for the mayor. That allowed me to negotiate a new chemical price, mini-volt delivery on our coagulant, which is gonna save us at this time approximately about $5,400 a year. But a hidden, a hidden thing to that is this new coagulant, I've been, I've actually been using it for six months, paying a little bit extra for it because I couldn't give it in bulk. But now that I'm giving it in bulk, we're saving more money. But an added benefit is, is backwash water. When we, when those filters get dirty, we have to backwash them, just like many of you do with your swimming pool. And to do that, we use drinking water. And, you know, there's a cost associated with every gallon of drinking water we make. And as a benefit, our filter lives, using this new chemical, have went up two and a half times. So our, our backwash water usage based on our cost to produce a million gallons of water is we're gonna save about $4,000 a year just in backwash water. So two decisions that y'all made here are gonna save this town about $15,400 a year. So, you know, when we listen to each other and work together, good things happen for Carthage, so... I just wanted to make y'all aware of that.
That's great.
And thank y'all for, you know, giving us what we asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's great, thank you, Rusty. Mr. Steve?
I don't have anything. We had ocean inspection two weeks ago, we got a real good report. I don't know if y'all have any questions, they're glad to try to answer.
We want to thank you again for that great video you did of the shoreline that got us all that wonderful money.
Yeah, we got the news on that, so hopefully, that'll be another progress that we're going forward on in the next year, so...
Good deal.
Mayor Smith figured it out.
It was your video, your video captured it beautifully, so I think it shocked them, actually.
We didn't want $90,000 gallons of sewage when it occurred.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, Steve. Chief Hyatt is out there? There you are, okay.
Y'all have a written report, didn't generate January, I don't know why. But it's the new stuff, the new software program, I'm still learning how to use it, so... I'll try to figure that out before next month, maybe get January on there. 211 calls today. We had a really good turnout for Halloween at Fire Station, still down from pre-COVID days. We're estimating about 175 kids and roughly 175 adults, which is good. We were seeing over 400 kids. Hopefully in another year or so, that will pick up. And then we'd like to know that ladder 11 failed pump test. Get it going to the shop as soon as I can get it to the shop. And we have, in our budget, $175,000 for used apparatus. And I'd like to ask y'all's permission to pull the trigger on it when we found one.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We've tried to do it before and not got it on time, right? We found one and we were very interested in, asked for more information, got that, called them back and it's calling.
Can we, well, just make a motion to approve up to a certain amount? We can discuss that as a council, that they can, when he finds it, he can pull the trigger on it?
Second.
Let's figure out.
Chief, do you have an amount in mind, Chief?
One second.
My budget is $175,000.
Let it be $175,000.
We looked at everything from $60,000 to, we looked at one, we didn't know the price on it, it was $380,000, so we pitched that out.
So if you were to find one, you still have a leadway that you could say no if it turns out to be a lemon and you didn't realize that?
I would not commit unless I wanted to try.
Okay, okay. Did you wanna make...
$175, up to $175,000, that he can pull the trigger whenever he finds what he needs.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? Yes, sir.
Okay, so bid process on that with vehicles, that's what I was curious about.
It's a used vehicle, it's non-used, meaning bid process.
So there's no bid processes, so we have no, nothing in our way to just go ahead and bear the trigger?
There are some hoops to jump through.
Okay.
CFOs personally wear that at least. But the, the companies that I deal with are used to that. They're aware of, what they're looking for is a commitment, possibly a down payment or a partial payment in order to secure it, and then they're willing to work with us on the rest of it.
Okay.
That's how we lost the other, somebody took a credit card and put a $10,000 down payment on one hoop. Quite seriously considered it.
Okay, so Scott, there's no, there's nothing that's in our way on that? We can go and just go forward there?
Hoops will, will cover, figure the vehicle, we'll figure the rest of it out.
Just so y'all know, we will do the best we can. I've got a committee that's working on that, not just me. I don't wanna be the only one looking at it, for better or worse. So I've got a committee of five.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of allowing up to 175, if you can find it? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Chief. Okay.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it.
I'll just add real quick on that, that's something that we've been asking for four years, so...
We've already budgeted.
We budgeted, but I feel like we've been budgeting for four years, so it's not like we're just, so the public knows it's not like we're just dropping 175. It's something that's been planned out and planned out, so...
We're operating in 1982.
Yeah.
We have 1986, 1995, and 2010. We're not, we're not operating as latest in the greatest.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Uh, CFO, he's out, Scott.
Once again, I like to put an aye when we talk about budget.
There you go.
Okay, you have the written report, okay? Financial statements you have, I wanna point, just a notation to, to those. We're still in a very liquid position, uh, but we also know that we have many capital projects on books. Uh, so, but right now, we're in very good, liquid position. Uh, we have had the preliminary audit work with Mr. John Poole. Uh, he had one recommendation that, uh, I concurred with, and that was to take our forty-six thousand dollar pool expenditure that we paid in July and to move it back to June because it was quote incurred during that time, even though we didn't have the invoice. And I agreed with that. It doesn't hurt us see anything, cause we had a eight hundred thousand dollar surplus for twenty twenty-one. But it is, you'll notice that in financial statements. If you look at it, you'll see that difference. Um, the fiscal policies that we'll do as resolutions, uh, we're not gonna do the purchasing policy tonight. Uh, Mayor and I met with, uh, Cassie Wheeler from the Municipal Technical Advisory Service, and she had some very minor changes, but important changes, and, uh, we'll get that back to you. Uh, we've got new procedures in place and, and they're working internal control policy. Uh, we have worked on that and customized it to the Town of Carthage, and that'll be coming your way soon. Good reading. The last thing is the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, Monday, November first, we received three hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and four cents. Um, I would like to move either that into the local government investment pool or just open up a brand-new checking account and totally separate that money, cause we'll run all expenditures out of one checking account, uh, for that money, cause it's gonna be closely watched and monitored how we use it. The only reason I'd wanna put it into the local government investment pool, actually the intermediate government investment pools, cause we'd get a little bit more earnings on it, but I don't know how quickly the council's gonna make a decision on it. If you pull the trigger on expenditures, we'll just go right to a checking account. But, uh, I think historically, you've talked about putting some money into the local government investment pool. Uh, we got enough surplus, we, we should probably do that sort of thing. But I think we have some new council members and it's a decision that you guys need to revisit, if that's what you wanna do.
What's the interest difference between the two?
The local government investment pool is equivalent to a rate that I spoke with, uh, our bank, and they were able to come up to that rate on, on substantial funds. But the intermediate government pool is probably about two and a half percent. It varies daily, and they give you a daily thing of what it's, what it's doing. It's not great, but if we're gonna hold on to that money for more than six months before we make any expenditures, we make a little more money. But the big thing is to have the intangible thought that this money is specific for sixty different purposes, and it's very precise about how we're gonna do that. I just wanna make sure it's separated from everything else.
The checking account is standard point zero one or something like that?
Uh, I'm gonna try to get the local government investment pool on that, that money, so whenever I talk to the banks, we'll.
Gotcha.
It, we're not in investment business. If we can just have something, okay?
Gotcha.
But, uh, so anything we do will always be very, very conservative from the, yes.
Uh, page twenty twenty-one, these are our long-term liabilities as far as debts we owe?
Uh, those are the existing, um, state revolving fund loans that we have. That's the balance as of October thirty-one.
Okay.
We make monthly payments.
Um, if we decided that we wanna pay off some long-term debts, would be the proper procedure to go about that?
Just tell me, do you wanna do that? Vote on it?
Do we do like a resolution for that, or do we just need to vote to?
I think so. There's no prepayment penalties for a, for a state revolving fund, so we're just able to write the check and pay it off.
Okay.
Uh, now, before I pull the trigger on all that, I double confirm, but I feel pretty certain that's the way it works.
Okay.
No prepayment penalties at all.
Okay.
These are loans that we've taken out for previous water tanks, and one of the loans was for the apparatus up at the water plant that should have been, what's it called, plant, just to put that in perspective, so that's, we're still paying on.
All those are, it's a few years old, at least three years old.
Well, not a lot, probably, but yeah.
You've got the years there. If you look at the way you read that, it says DG three, two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen, fourteen, eighteen. Eighteen would be the newest one. That was for last water. The codes mean something. You just have to know what the code is. So now you know.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Um, then we have the grant reports. It's Mr. Wa, oh, Evan, you all hit, great. Could you, we've got you for the walking track. Talk a little bit about the bank erosion and then touch on Main Street if you want to also.
All right. All the walking tracks, these down there doing the defective work and the grading, some of the grading, uh, is going to wait till it dries out. It's just kind of impossible to grade most, so everything else is trying to get took care of on the punch list. We done walked through a couple of weeks ago. We made up a punch list. Main Street, as far as I know, is on hold because of the water line, so, uh, we basically got the contractor on hold on that one. And Third Avenue, I'm gonna let the mayor talk a little bit on that. I think she met with a group that T-Dot has contracted with for this year to do soil stabilization, so there's an option there.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, it was in regard, before you go on to that, it was in regards to the walking track. Did the city notify you as an engineer that that park had several trailers buried in the ground?
They told me that it used to be a trailer park, and they didn't know what was buried in where, is what it was led to believe in the beginning.
So, um, Mr. Easily came and visited me. I didn't, I didn't know he was showing up either, so. But, um, he was telling me basically, they had a, they had a plan, and obviously, I've, I've been down a walk track. I've not been very impressed with it. But he said, I, 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 they planned on doing this walking track, not knowing that there were literal buildings underneath the walking track that when they were doing the grading, they had to basically dig up all this stuff that whoever buried years ago. And, which is a big reason there's issues have, there's issues with it. And then also, um, that's why we see the trash everywhere. Um, they also, he's told me that he was completely unaware of the dog park being put in there.
When he bid the project.
When he bid the project, so.
It was well as a very small dog park when he bid the project. It's eighty by eighty.
So we kind of worked around that. So, that being said, um, you know, I just, I wanna publicly apologize. I got, I didn't have all the facts. I had the facts that we bid a project exactly to this person, and they didn't come to standard to our bid, or what, what they, we said we do, but we technically, we changed the project based on the size of that dog park slightly.
We changed his grading, yes. He couldn't grade the dog park, cause of the fence, the fence, and so we graded everything around it.
Okay.
It worked, so.
So I think it would be wise for us to, uh, speak with Mr. Easily, seeing that he's also gonna be doing the, um, I and I project there on, um.
Futurally.
Futurally, yeah. So I think it, uh, I, I think there's two sides of the story, and we got one side. And I was pretty strong on the one side, but I, I think it would be good for us to hear the other side of it, um, what he had to go through, because apparently there was a lot of lack of communication there, which is why the walking track looks the way it does.
Do you see anything to that?
He did know there was Trudersburg there. I'm sorry. David Eddy's a good friend of mine.
Yeah.
But he knew Trudersburg.
And I don't, my understanding after the fact, it's not like a whole trailer, it's just parts of.
It's his business.
Yeah.
I understand the way that it is.
And I don't know, David, I was, I was, I was literally having a meal with my cousin on my porch, and he walked up and we talked for about fifteen minutes, and I told him I would, I'd give it a shot. I'd look at it. I told him, just honestly, I'm not impressed. I'm not trying to be ugly or mean about it, but this is what's going on.
That's why you see the trash and stuff that you see. Nobody else will tell them what's down there until you start moving the dirt.
I just think it'd be fair for us to give him a chance to defend himself to the council, invite him to the next, if the city can invite him to the next meeting to see what's going on with all that, because.
Bad idea for the walking track, cause it started, period. The first is, maybe it might have.
Gotcha.
And they were stuck with the old design, too. I know we've said that, but what Mr. Warren did, they couldn't change. So there, there wasn't improvements that they could do outside of that scope of plans.
Yeah, I got you, and I'm not, it's not.
And I don't think that's said enough.
What, what I'm getting at is, the public wanted a certain vision that was presented to them, like, we're gonna have this nice, beautiful walking track, and half of it's still somewhat of a mud hole, and then other things happen, and then now we're pointing fingers. And I just think that we should make sure, if we're gonna point fingers, we get the full story, not just hear one side, hear the whole other side of it, too, so. I mean, I'm still not impressed with it, but, I mean, I haven't been down there in about two weeks, though, either, so.
Okay, any other, um, oh, so we're gonna talk.
You were gonna talk about the Third Avenue.
Oh, okay, yes, yes. We, we, uh, we had bid for retaining wall for the Third Avenue where the erosion is, and the second bid came in even higher, at three, was it three hundred and twenty thousand?
Three twenty.
Three twenty. So I had a conversation with some folks at T-Dot for something else we're working on, and, um, we're talking about across the river on Seventy where they're gonna have to do the slope work there. And I said, I just said in passing, gosh, we wish I could find something for our little situation here, and he said, well, what is it? And when I explained, and lo and behold, they have a whole division of T-Dot that does this kind of bank stabilization with contracts and are already vetted with the procurement office for the lowest bid for all of these. So he sent over, was kindly sent over all the contracts and stuff that they have with different companies. We located the one closest by. It's this nationwide company based in Colorado. They came out last week from, um, somewhere in Nashville. Les and Derek and I went down and walked through the whole situation with them, and it's a fascinating process called soil, soil nailing. They do it all over the place for T-Dot. He gave us, he came in yesterday, yes, the, the, well, early this morning. He came back with an estimate of two hundred and one thousand?
Yeah.
Two hundred and one thousand?
Two fourteen, one sixty-five.
Okay, which is a hundred thousand dollars less, and I'll take a hundred thousand dollars any day, so I, unless, I mean, the process is something T-Dot has already vetted. Um, so I would say if we could go with that lower situation, yes, sir.
I went on a beautiful hike out in the nature wilderness last week, and I stumbled across a big erosion situation out in Kentucky. And I took a picture of it, and I asked a couple of questions up there, and it seemed to be working out pretty well. I'm holding up a picture if y'all wanted to see too over here. But it was just the, these are the smaller T-walls. It wasn't as big as I was talking about. But it seemed to be working pretty, pretty well up there, and I can't imagine this being two hundred thousand dollars. And I know it's less than three hundred thousand dollars, but originally, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars, so it's still a hundred thousand dollars high.
Well, I think unfortunately, materials and everything have changed quite a bit. With a, I, I don't know, Evan, do you?
Could we reassess that with, uh, the organization you're dealing with and see what they think of that process?
I'm sorry, which?
Was it T-D, T-Dot bids these things out yearly? Um, I would, I'd ask that Scott actually review this, um, before y'all do something. It's, uh, it says that y'all, that they, they do these and that they are available to any Tennessee state agency that's a municipality. Usually the ones that we deal with, T-Dot, T-Dot's got their own contracts that they let.
This is a special situation.
Municipals, y'all could actually use these bids that they blocked in for a year.
So it's, it's.
This group come in and basically estimated these quantities at that rate. So that's worth a two fourteen, one sixty-five, so y'all don't have, I, I would ask him to check and make sure y'all don't have to go through that true procurement process.
Yeah, I, I did, I did call back to T-Dot and to the company, too, and actually Les and Derek were sitting in the conversation, and, um, that is, I mean, you won't find a lower bid. That's, that's kinda like your, your state bid process. They've already vetted everything to the lowest cost. Um, I, if we're gonna get this thing fixed, I, I, kinda like some of you, I think we do need to move pretty soon with this, and we will save a hundred thousand dollars on this using a company that T-Dot has already used statewide.
I've seen T-Dot.
Seven-year warranties, what they're giving.
I'm sorry?
Seven-year warranty.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Well, that looks to more like a temporary fix than a permanent solution, to me.
Here, again, I'm not gonna argue with that either.
I'm saying that's what it looks like.
It could be somewhat of a temporary fix. I'd say it's a seven-year fix, at least. The last T-Dot project I saw was the one that took forever up here, that kept still collapsing. And then the bridge that, well, it was pushing that back, and then a bridge that was done and had to be redone again. And again, right now, I just don't have a lot of, no, no sense, T-Dot, but I don't have a lot of confidence in T-Dot. I wouldn't hire T-Dot.
But this is not T-Dot. This, this is a private company, and it's not T-Dot.
Hired by T-Dot. That T-Dot highly recommends.
That's one of them, yeah.
All I'm saying is, two hundred thousand dollars a lot of money, and we could put some T-walls up there, and, I mean, it ain't.
Mr. Jones, you, may you, could you, just as an engineer, kinda weigh in on this?
Yeah, so, I mean, so what soil nailing is right is they take a, they take a face, and they basically drill, drill piers back into the slope at an angle. And so you've got a face here that can be concrete, it can be some type of steel sheeting, it could be, it could be a number of different things. And those anchors that are drilled back into the slope are what's holding it back. Now, I'm not a geotechnical engineer. I don't, I don't do that for a living, but, I mean, it is a very common practice. T-Dot is using that. I can't really speak to, to what the lifespan of it is. As far as pricing is concerned, I can tell you that stuff today, on average, is costing almost seventy-five percent more than it cost a year ago. And we were talking about ARPA funds earlier. I can tell you right now, every municipality in the state of Tennessee just got money deposited yesterday. And they are looking to move that money quickly, and there is going to be a shortage of contractors and a shortage of material, I believe, and prices are going to continue to go up. So I don't think you're gonna be able to, and I know nothing about the project, but I would be surprised if you wait six months or a year and you find someone who's willing to do it for less than you could get someone to do it for today.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this bid and have Scott look at it like he suggested. We go ahead and do it and jump on it while we can get it done, instead of waiting down the road. We made a decision last month. We're gonna do it this month. I made the motion we had put in, except now.
A motion and second. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, he was just talking about drilling into the side of the wall. They'll probably be drilling into coffins.
No, they go down at an angle. You go to Jackson County and see where they're doing it. I watched them do it. They go at about a, what, about a thirty-degree angle?
Uh, it's all on their design. This, this includes design that they're using. It's a, it's a design build firm. So they'll do their own design, they'll do their own, things included in the two fourteen.
It's two hundred thousand dollars. We haven't even looked at this as an option yet. That was the last thing we asked, was this to be looked at, see how much it would cost, and I haven't heard back how much that cost, cause that was what was requested, I requested that. We all requested that at the last meeting.
I think that's, you're talking about the building blocks?
Yeah, the T-walls, yeah.
Didn't we, didn't we look at that?
We get that priced at, well, I.
Yeah.
You did? Okay.
Not temporary, not temporary.
Permanent.
But you'd want to put some for temporary for time being.
I mean, temporary too, I mean, when stocks are going up, you don't buy. I'm just saying, it's just like, we, if it's gonna keep raising up, that's the time just to wait for it to top out and bottom out again, and then we do something temporary. It's just, it's, I mean, you don't, I wouldn't run a business that way, that's all I'm saying. I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy low and sell high, not buy high.
What, Evan, what, did, didn't we check into that price? I thought, yeah.
What was, what was the price on that?
It's about the same price.
Yeah, it's about the same.
The wall was gonna be about the same price, no matter what method.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it's long lasting.
Okay, well, I was talking about just that, those temporary T-walls. Those T-walls that they put up just to, to block off, you, you, how, that costs the same amount?
No, no, no. I'm talking about a permanent fix.
Okay, so what we were asking about was the last one. We were asking about the T-walls, the temporary one. And what I'd ask is if we could get that price, then we can vote on it with a clear conscience, not go rushing to spend the two hundred thousand dollars right now, cause I still think this is a viable option temporarily, cause, I mean, prices aren't gonna be high forever. It's not sustainable. Inflation will take off, and there's gonna have to be a stabilization at some point. It's just that simple economics. And if we're gonna buy in right now, you know.
Yes, sir.
I've got a clear conscience in spending two fourteen as a permanent fix, rather than spending a bunch of money on temporary. I'll put that on record.
Again, we don't know if it's a bunch of money on a temporary.
That's just my opinion.
Any further ideas, discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, second, to go with the, uh, soil nailing process, it's two fourteen, is that right, two fourteen? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And then Scott is gonna check into that also. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones, could we talk about the Turkey Creek Water Pump Station, INI, just an update, Futuro Alley?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, as far as Turkey Creek Pump Station is concerned, this was a project that originally started out that we took over from Mr. Warren with Warren and Associates that was a new water storage tank. Water storage tank was bid twice. Both times the water storage tank, uh, the first time it was bid, it was four hundred and something thousand dollars. The second time it was bid, it was approximately three hundred thousand dollars, both of which those bids exceeded the available funding from the grant and the city, or the town of Carthage, as it says, match, which was a fifty-fifty split. So an idea was come up with to try to control costs was to go to a water booster station, because you have an existing water booster station that's at the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced anyways. This water booster station runs constantly, maintains the pressure in the system, and alleviates the need for the storage tank if you decide to take the storage tank out at some point in the future. But if the storage tank, if nothing else, could just be rehabilitated. So at the time, that project was conceptualized, the thought was two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That was a little over a year ago. Uh, we get to the point of actually bidding the project along with everything else in the world. Prices have gone insane, and the price came in at three hundred and six thousand dollars was the low bidder. As I said earlier, with funding coming out, you know, I don't see you being able to do anything here. We can't, water, the cost of water tanks has gone up. You know, the grant funding is already written for, for this. I don't know if the grant funding agency would go through and rewrite it or what they would even be able to write it for. So at this point, we've got a triplex water booster station, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I wrote a letter and sent that to the mayor and staff recommending award of that to W.N.O. Construction, who is very capable of constructing it. It's up to you all if you wanna spend that money.
I think you said three, three oh six is what you-
Three hundred and six thousand and three hundred and something dollars or something.
What was the grant match on that?
Fifty-fifty.
Yeah, and the grant right now is-
It's only up to two hundred, right?
Ninety-seven thousand dollars is what you have in grant.
And Derek, do we, we have some money set aside for this, too, don't we?
Yes, at the beginning of the bus year, I set aside eighty, roughly eighty thousand dollars to upgrade the booster pump station. So that money is still budgeted, uh, which would be, had, could be added to whatever this is responsible for.
Okay.
What was the total on that again?
Three oh six.
It's in this.
Three hundred and-
It's in the packet here.
Yeah.
Oh, it's this one.
This is your bid packet below all the bids that we had there. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this bid. And the remaining funds that we use, we take out of the money we just received for the COVID money that was given to us for water plants, sewers, and all that. That way it doesn't come out of our general fund.
Okay.
Second, for the special.
Okay, second, yes, sir.
From my understanding, and I may be totally wrong on what I'm hearing, but I heard we had ninety-seven, and we've got eighty.
About one seventy-seven.
And it's three oh six.
One minute, six hours.
And we're paying half, so we have enough to pay half without getting into anything else wrong.
I think the grant was left for like two hundred and five or something, wasn't it?
The grant, Tommy keeps up with the grant numbers. There was ninety-seven thousand dollars in construction, and then there was some contingency monies as well, which was about twenty-seven thousand dollars, I wanna say. I wanna say somewhere in the range of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what there is in grant funding available.
So we have two hundred thousand.
Sorry.
They're parting, and I'm parting altogether.
They're taking anything out of general.
Well, that's their part, and you have to match their-
You're gonna take nine thousand dollars in general fund?
Yes.
So-
Well, you could use the COVID money for that instead of general fund money, I mean. So, first question, we can use that COVID money for this specifically, there's no restrictions on that?
My initial response is, I believe so, but I would confirm it with the AARP folks before I would say definitively, but it is a water sewer infrastructure program.
So we got eighty K that we've already allocated in our budget. We got ninety-seven K that it'll, um, that'll cover as far as we go with the match. And that puts us up to one seventy-seven, minus one, three oh six, puts us at a one twenty-nine. You're saying it's one twenty on the-
Grant.
Grant, so that puts us at nine K that we need to do a budget amendment.
It's, I'm seeing a drastic-
I also have, in machinery and equipment, I think, in my budget, I think I still have thirty-one thousand dollars left, too, that we had initially proposed that we could use towards this also.
Okay.
Now, that's an equipment, like a capital expense account. It's okay. I, I have it for an emergency fund in case something breaks. So if we use it for this and a pump goes down somewhere, then we're gonna have to find some more money, but-
Okay.
I have that to go with.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna resend my motion, just making a motion to approve this bid with the, with the existing funds that we have available.
Okay, motion, send in a new motion just to approve with the funds we have available and the matching, of course, by AARP. So here's second to that.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
So you're saying the funds available, so that means are you wanting to make a budget amendment?
No.
Need to.
We'll need to.
It's in their budgets already. It's budgeted for that.
So already, everything's a hundred percent there?
Yes.
Sounds like it, okay.
Plus if it's under ten thousand, so.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so we'll move forward with that one, okay?
I'll send the contract documents, I'll prepare those and send them out to the contractor for execution.
Okay, so you wanted to bring us up to date on the INI project? I know they started putting these out this week.
So the INI project has begun. Flow meters have been installed in the manholes, and they will be in place for ninety days. So we'll be able to start compiling the data that we get at the end of February. Going into March, George and I will go through, while I've gone through all of that data, we'll be able to present to you all what areas of the sewer system are contributing to high flows at the sewer treatment plant. And we will be in, begin to put together a scope for smoke testing. So at that point in time, we'll probably, we'll come, we'll talk about that and provide maps of where smoke testing will occur. That way if people in town see smoke coming up out of the ground, that they don't get too excited, because that's exactly what'll happen, either in the main lines or in their service lines or something. And so through that, we'll be able to tell, okay, where are the defects in the system? So we'll know where the flow is from, and then through smoke testing, we're able to identify the defects, which then allow us to identify the way to fix those defects, cost effectively. Uh, and all that will end up in a report, and ultimately, at the end of the day, when this project is wrapped up through this pilot program with SRF, you'll have a set of plans for an initial rehabilitation project, which will allow you to remove this excess flow from your system and reclaim capacity both in your collection system and at your wastewater plant.
And one of the great benefits is that we'll be ahead of the game, because we already have the game plan, and TDEC is the one that we're doing this through, and TDEC is the one that's gonna control all of this massive amount of money coming down to the county. So it really, it's really helpful that we've already got this process started with them, and they're aware of it.
So, any questions on that from council?
Okay, then the Futuro Alley, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure that I add this. Depending on what happens with Futuro Alley, as Dick states, whether we will need to get a budget amendment.
Exactly.
Okay. But if we use AARP funds or approve to do that, and I think we would be, we wouldn't have to do a budget amendment.
That's what I'm curious about with Futuro Alley, was that, would that be a qualifier for that? Would that be a qualifier for the COVID money?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay.
I think both of them qualify.
Okay. Can you, can you let us know officially next meeting?
Sure can.
Okay.
Okay, and Futuro Alley, where are we?
Futuro Alley, after your last meeting, I was told that the project was awarded, so we sent the contract documents out to the contractor. Contractor is getting their performance and payment bonds together. Uh, they also have, because it's an SRF project, there's a lot of documentation that they have to provide in regards to solicitation of minority and small businesses and things of that nature. So there's a packet that has to be put together and sent to SRF. So even before the final contracts are signed, all of that information has to be sent in. SRS, SRF has to approve the contract and the contractor, and then we'll be able to move forward. It's a little longer process than what it is on a local fund project. So I don't anticipate us being able to have a pre-con. The holidays are coming up, obviously, people taking off. I don't imagine getting all that stuff through and approved at the state level. Uh, so we probably won't be having a pre-con on that particular project and having the contractor start. I wouldn't estimate until late January or early February.
Okay. Any questions about that from the council? Thank you very much.
Did you wanna talk about the other line and the paving issue?
I think we're kind of holding, I don't know if you want.
I'd love to hear about it.
Okay, so the mayor has talked about you all have a contract to pave Main Street. There's a water line under Main Street that needs to be replaced. If you pave the road and then you replace the water line, you have to cut the pavement. We have to repave it, and then we have to blend the paving back together. You can do that, but then you're paving twice. If you go ahead and put the water line in, obviously, then you pave and, and you're done, and everything's good. The problem is the timing issue. So I know you have a contractor and you have a bid, and I don't know when that bid ends, but it's gonna take, based on getting material and everything right now, we estimate it'll take a hundred and fifty days for a contractor to start that project once they had material and get from one end of that project to the other. So that's five months. It's not designed by anybody, it's not approved by the state, and it's not bid. So if that's something that you all are wanting to be able to do prior to paving, then that's something that you're gonna have to make a decision to move forward on as a council, to authorize someone to design it and send it into the state in order to get that ball rolling. Because if they're planning on paving as soon as asphalt plant's open in late March or early April, it's gonna be nearly impossible to, to make that timeframe. Uh, because, you know, even if you started work now, a contractor, you could put a contractor to work now, it's gonna rain all February, so they're not gonna make any progress in the rain. So, uh, part of that comes into coordination with your paving contractor on how long can they delay their bid for you? So I know you got a good bid on that, and as we just talked earlier, prices are only going up. Uh, I have walked that with Derek and Les. There's nowhere else to put that water line except over in the shoulder of the road. We can, it can be put in at some point in the future after the paving's done. I've got a project in Lebanon, Tennessee, right up the side of Highway two thirty-one that's gonna bid in the state highway, and we have to repave it and blend it back together. But you will be obviously paying to pave a section of that road twice to do that.
My understanding from the paving company, they don't want to do that, is that the last thing we've heard from them?
Yeah, that's right.
They don't want their name on that.
They don't want to make sense of it. Have to pave a road and have to be blended in, it's their reputation.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we put it out for bid, to see when we get this started and see how much it's gonna cost for this water line before we-
Well, we'd have to have the design first.
Yeah, you have to have someone designing first.
So we'd have to make a motion.
We need to make a motion to-
Most of them have someone designing.
I sent, I sent a proposal to the mayor, uh, let's see, where? You, there is a proposal that's been sent, if you all want us to design the work, that you can look at and, uh... But, I mean, I don't think it's in this, in this packet, it was sent like last month or something.
So just based on the, then I'll second your motion, I'm sorry. So we have discussion.
Okay, so the discussion is to go ahead and-
Or I guess you have to-
Ask an engineer to do the plan that-
I'll resend the motions. The motion I'll make now is we go ahead and get this project started.
So hire the engineer to-
Find the engineer, find the design plan, and move forward.
So, Mr. Jones has put together something?
Yeah, I mean, I can-
But what was your guesstimate on that, though? It was quite high.
The, the price on it at that time was estimated at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I mean, the price was obviously-
We're looking at, we're looking at from the bridge, no, no, not the bridge, we're looking at pipe, right?
From Ward, Ward.
It's from Ward.
Ward all the way to Smotherman.
Ward to Smotherman, okay. So, um, we found a need, this is something that we need to do. It's not a, it's not a want, it's not whatever, we need to do this.
Someone has to second the motion before we discuss it.
I think you already did.
I did.
Not the new one.
Not the new one.
No, he did.
I did.
For you to move forward on that one.
I don't know, I can't remember either.
He did, I wrote it down.
But she said I did, so I'm gonna take her word for it.
I just didn't hear you say-
I'll second it officially, again.
Yes, I didn't just hear you say-
I'll second my second.
Okay, all right, so.
Uh, but yes.
So it's seventeen, did, how, did you say seventeen?
About seventeen, so that's what we estimated.
And, and just recognize, please, that based on where pricing is right now, seven fifty won't be seven fifty on bid day. I mean, I can, I'm more than happy to update an estimate for you and give you an increased cost estimate based on what we're seeing. But, I mean, pipe, three-inch pipe that used to be seventy-five cents a foot is now three dollars and fifty cents a foot, so.
But if we don't start now, it's gonna be that much-
If you don't start now, it'll be, yeah.
It's gonna be that much more expensive later.
And I'm not doing it based on pricing, I'm doing it based on, let's get the plans at least out there. Because pricing could reverse. It's, it will eventually have to reverse. So it's, it's just one of those things where at least we can get the plans going to see what the scope is. And we might say, it might be too high, we might say, you know what, let's hold off on this. We get the plans ready to go, for when we're ready to pull the trigger, pull the trigger, we'll go, you know?
Okay, to, to, first of all, if we were gonna use Mr. Jones, there is a cost for plans, to put everything together. Do you have a guesstimate of what that would be for?
Yeah, I can. The not-to-exceed engineering fee for design was forty-three thousand dollars. We don't charge you forty-three thousand dollars, we bill you hourly. That's the cap for the design based on the rural development fee schedule for the estimated cost of the project.
So we would have to, to have a, a motion to ask Mr. Jones to go ahead to do the design, and then after that's finished-
That's what, the motion was to go ahead and start the project.
Okay. But just to give it, just to give it out.
And it's gonna cost forty-three thousand, approximately forty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's, that's the not-to-exceed.
Yeah, no more than.
Yeah, yeah, for the design services.
So do we just take that phase first and not go as far as TDEC and every, all the approval?
Well, that would get you through TDEC instead of putting it, but again, I mean, you know, this, this is driven by the paving, and I don't want you all to spend any money on anything that you don't want. If you, if you do the paving, I mean, the conversations we've had is, can we get it done before paving is done? So I think my recommendation to you would be think about, do you want to pave the road? Because if you want to pave the road and you don't wanna have to rebid your paving contract, you may not have enough time to get a water line installed.
I don't think it's, I think it's foolish to pave the road, then dig it up.
So if you don't wanna pave the road and you wanna put the water line in first, then you're probably not.
We have to have the water.
Nobody wants to pave that road more than me, I think it's foolish to pave the road before you want it.
Foolish to pave it, we're gonna have to just dig it up again, so let's move forward with the-
Let me just ask you, timewise, because they're saying, Derek, are they saying next April or May they would pave it? Is that kind of what they would do, April? Is there any possibility, if we started at this moment, that we could do this?
So let me, let me walk y'all through a general timeframe. So if you told me today to go back and start, I would dedicate one person just to push this as quickly as possible, to make that timeframe possible for you all. But it's gonna take sixty days to get this to TDEC, okay? TDEC's gonna take thirty days to review it. To speed it up, TDEC will approve it. It's just 30 days is their timeframe that they have to turn it back around. You could go ahead and advertise and bid. So if you started today, you could advertise bids in January. But you have to advertise bids for a minimum of 14 days. Better if you do it for 21. So you're not opening bids until February. If you open bids in February, let's say we open, you open bids such that you can immediately award a contract to a contractor. Then you're going to have 30 days by the time the contractors get his bid bonds and everything and gets to the point where you can have a pre-con and I can give them a notice to proceed. That means they're not, their official time doesn't start till April. When their official time starts, they don't have any material. So they have to order all their material because they don't order their material until after they have a contract. So if they can get their material in a reasonable timeframe, that's 30 days. So they're not going to have their material until May. And then if they need five months to build it, you're not going to have a water line in the ground until next fall.
Okay, let me ask you, just, just playing whatever here. If, if you do the design.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get it to TDEC and get it to approval, could we not bid that design with the caveat, it might have to have a little scope change depending on TDEC? Could we not get, go ahead and get that out there?
Well, that's what I'm saying. You could advertise and, you know, if we, if we rush the design and, you know, the quickest I could see you being able to advertise would be 60 days. So because we have to, from our standpoint, you know, you talking about things that were buried in the ground. You didn't know about, we have to do them one call. We have to have all utilities located. We have to come out and pick those utilities up. We have to, you know, set up the contract documents. So we have to do, you know, we have to have enough time to do our work such that we don't end up in a situation where a contractor comes back and wants to ask for change orders because of incomplete work on our end, which drives up your cost. Because when you are no longer in a competitive bid, they can just, you know, it costs more.
Normally we want to rush a project like this anyway. We want it done right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, question, Scott, where did the money come from? For the, the 43,000?
Roughly $2 million in my recommendation that we could, we could expend out of water sewer fund if we needed to, okay? At this moment in time. But if it's going to be that long before we do the water, I mean, a lot of things can change by then. But if you told me to or asked me to, I would say, yeah, we can put $2 million right now into a savings account for these projects. And I still have a million dollars to run.
I'm not just for the 43,000 as far as that goes. Like, do we need to do a budget amendment for the 43,000 to get him to do that engineering?
Well, it's not in our budget, so we would have to, yeah.
We'd have to vote to approve it. To be expended.
It'd be a problem if we had cash flow issues and turn us down. But we, we're in good shape. We can do that.
It's a need.
Can I follow up on just, just something that just occurred to me and probably been discussed? If it's going to be that long for us to put in the water lines, then the paving is definitely pushed back. Can we not just patch Main Street so it's smooth for whatever it costs to do that?
Well, one of the things that had been bantered around, but Evan's left now is that one of the things we wanted to accomplish downtown was to get up, get rid of that turning lane and do some re-striping. That could be done. We'd have to go back over it later when it was, when it was been milled down and paved. But that re-stri, we could take out that lane now just to help the downtown situation. It's part of what we wanted to, that was part of what we wanted to accomplish. Yes, sir.
It was my understanding that the engineer said we do not need to do away with the turn lanes. That the county justified having.
No, no, it was just the.
No, we voted to do that. But regardless, I, I really want it paved down there. But again, I just, if we don't, I mean, I'd say visibility is the only issue we really have down there is visible lines. But I mean, we can hold off, if we have a plan in place, we're working on it. It just takes time, but it's not like we're not doing anything. So I mean, if we can hold off and save that money, let's hold off and save that money. I mean, yes, I'd love, personally, I'd love to, but I just don't think it's a good use of funding is all.
Dr. Duke, you had a.
Yeah, just from, just from the planning standpoint, we, of course, the planning commission looked at those new drawings from the engineer as far as the parking and everything. One of the big problems is right now that those lanes, lanes are not T-DOT width lanes. So I mean, we're, we're, right now, they're more narrow than what T-DOT recommends now. I understand that that's not a state road, but still they, they don't meet standards. So, you know, I just wonder.
So, so.
If we re-stripe, you know, if you just re-stripe that, that would, I think it would put us back in with the appropriate width.
To take, to take the middle lane out, you're saying?
I agree with all that, but let's go with the motion we have on the floor. Vote on that, then we can go into vote on a different motion so we don't get everything all convoluted.
Okay, so we have the motion to go forward with an engineering plan and, and get it approved by T-DOT. And that would be no more than $43,000.
Would not exceed.
Yeah.
And we got a second.
Any further discussion on that?
I guess the further discussion is, do we need to follow that with a vote to amend the budget to allow for that to happen? Procedurally, right? Because it's, we're voting spending money we haven't budgeted for.
We would have to, that would have to be a formal budget amendment then if we do that. Scott, what do you think about that?
I'm not sure we're ready for a budget amendment just yet.
We haven't received a bill.
Yeah. I think we're, we got access to some funds. And the timing of all this is what makes the difference.
So we don't need to do the budget?
Well, not until we.
No, it's not.
We know what it actually is. Okay, so we have that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of going forward and get the engineering plan? Any opposed? Okay. All right, so let's talk tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Now, I'd like the motion to accept Dr. Duke's idea of re-striping Main Street to make it compatible with T-DOT regulations.
Okay, and that would include taking out, you're saying the center?
Turn.
The center, okay. I have a motion, do I have a second to that?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, yes, sir.
I recommend that prior to your next meeting, we have a town forum. I'll be able to speak on this because I've heard a lot of negative things about doing away with that.
The center lane?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask Scott, what, would you clarify, what did you mean by just doing some?
Well.
That's not what you were talking about, was it?
I didn't think so.
Would you clarify what you were suggesting?
I don't know about the strapping and all that. I'll leave that to people smarter than me. But the road's rough. I'm just asking if that's a lot of the public's concern. Can't we just patch it for $50,000 until such time as all this comes in and?
I mean, that's. The road's rough, but I'd say, I mean, if we're going to patch work, I think there's some rougher roads than Main Street. And just my opinion on.
But we have been promising Main Street for a while.
We have and.
And now it's going to be more delayed. No, it isn't our fault, of course. We're just looking at.
Les, do you have any thoughts?
Main Street's not that bad. I'm sorry, but it's not that bad. There's worse streets in this town than that right up there.
Sure is.
Yeah.
I say patch it, the rough spots.
If we're talking about patch jobs, I would, I would agree in, I would agree for, for patches. As far as strapping goes.
It's not that bad. Just like it's out, you know, going that way.
I mean, I want to do strapping just as much as anybody, but I just feel like we're just, I mean, let's, if we're moving forward on this project, we're looking at that timeline. We're, we're a year out from re-striping it again. And a year's going to be here like that.
Well, that's the same argument as putting asphalt down. We have to dig it up anyway. It, it's not a logical argument.
Did you?
That was, well, we're going to re-stripe it and then put asphalt over again.
And you're going to patch it and put asphalt.
Dig it up, so that's why I'm saying we shouldn't.
Councilman Peters, you had something.
I don't know why we're, why we're talking about spending money anyway. I think if, if we've got the water line, we've got to look at, it's, it's going to be like Councilman Abel said, it's going to be a year or so before we're able to, to do anything with Main Street. I don't know why we do anything with Main Street until that time. Why aren't we going to double do anything? It's a waste of money. It's a waste of taxpayer money. I don't think we should do anything besides the water line. And when that's done, let's pay $50,000 and all that. That's, that's crazy.
Okay.
We wouldn't do that in our personal lives. We shouldn't do it with taxpayer money.
Okay, any further? Yes, sir.
I agree 100% with the patch. What I was getting at is the planning commission said that our roads don't meet the standard. I was saying we could line them to make them too standard is what I was.
Less than a year they will. Less than a year they will and it's been that way for years anyways.
It's not going to be less than a year, but okay.
But.
But I guess one of the issues is we don't know how much it would cost just to re-stripe. It may not be that much.
I'll say, before you were on the council, we voted to re-stripe it. We already did, we've already re-stripped it. And it was like, we put like loading zone stripes out for crosswalks.
I saw that together.
Not kidding. That's what happened and that's not what I thought was going to happen. I would like, I just, I'm with Jesse on this one 100%. Just wait because it's the same, you just said the same argument. Why are we going to re-stripe it and then go dig it all up and then re-stripe it again? It just don't make no sense.
It doesn't make any sense because our streets all over town and it's a lot worse shape than Main Street is. A lot worse shape. And to go down and patch it is just.
We'll move forward with this nice, steady law, I mean, not trying to make it long, but just well-thought-out project. We get it dug up, we put the water line in, we pave real nice over it, get nice paving and, and we just do it. We know this is happening when people ask, well, why is Main Street like this? From now on, we don't have to say anything like, well, the city council won't do anything. We're, as of tonight, we're doing something about it finally, so.
If I'm understanding though, just because, I mean, how, how much, when we stripe, is it, how much is it? It's not that much, is it?
No, it's not that much.
I, I think what Dr. Duke, if I'm hearing correctly, is saying if we could just re-stripe, pay a little bit to re-stripe and remove that middle lane, we've given, increased the safety downtown. And that, that, when they mill it down, it's going to be, you don't think so, okay?
Technically, none of this is even on the agenda. I think we should move on to the higher engine names.
Okay.
There's a motion, a second, so we need to vote.
I rescind my motion.
All right.
Okay, all righty. We'll move on to, um. Okay, well, as far as the CDVG and Blue Cross, Marcy's not here tonight, but I talked to her this morning. They haven't heard, none of, none of those have been announced as yet. So we don't have any information about either. Hopefully soon, at least the CDVG. Okay, unfinished business, Title IX, Chapter 1 of Municipal Code. We're dealing with peddlers, solicitors, transient vendors, street barkers. Attorney Melvin.
So I wasn't here at the last meeting in person. I was here via Zoom. Some of the things, obviously, I heard on there. It's never the same being on Zoom as it is being in person and actually hearing everybody talk in person. The way I understand it was the last time there was a, and correct me if I'm wrong about the names, but there was an issue with the Chamber of Commerce and the Walton, was it Walton Day? Is it the name of the festival? Uh, there was, I guess at Walton Day, they have solicitors and street peddlers and things come and set up booths. I've never been personally myself, but that's the way I understand it at work. There's an issue over whether or not they had to pay the $20 to be a street, to be permitted or something. I think the guy got halfway through his discussion or three quarters of the way or something. And they all voted just to do away with the $20 fee. The mayor and I have talked about it. One, I guess my question is to you guys tonight, was to do, was to do away with the $20 fee just for that specific event? Or was it every event in town? Was to do away with the $20 fee for transient vendors, peddlers, street barkers, things of the such? Was it at events? Barkers, did I say barkers?
It said, no, it says street barkers. I've never, what's the street, is that like a?
Yelling at you, it's on the street.
Well, and it did, when I read it, it did mention they were not allowed to yell or ring the bell. So it must be, how old is this?
What do they call them?
Probably very old.
The, the town criers.
Exactly.
I think we should bring that back on.
So they could stand in front of your business and yell to sell something.
Well, actually.
Oh, they do that for other things, but yeah.
In Title IX that we sent you though, I think we sent you a copy. That's the definition of street barker, someone who sets up a festival or parade. That's what they call them in the, in the ordinance.
So my question's further is, for these classifications of people, is it just at events that you want to waive the $20, the $20 fee? I'm familiar with a gentleman that used to come to Livingston all the time and he said little win things that look like a Road Runner and he sold on the side of the road. So are you looking, I'm, I'm sure under the law, thinking back on it now, he would be considered a transient vendor. Are you looking to waive the fee for someone such as that for the $20? So with all of that being said, I think there were some open-ended questions that need to be addressed. Now, procedurally, I, I would agree, the mayor had some concerns. I, I would agree that it wasn't done right to amend that motion. Obviously, you know, we have to have a proposed amendment in writing. It has to be, it has to be voted on twice before.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, I'm sorry, you know, before it, before it becomes amended. So we do need a proposed modification or amendment to the ordinance and then it has to be voted on twice. So just to, I guess the formal or the informal motion and vote to do away with it's probably not, is not the correct way to do it. We do need a proposed, I mean, and.
The vote, the vote was to waive the fees because of the, the Walton Days was happening that weekend. We had to act on it that time.
And that's.
We talked about the market fest too.
We talked about that. The market fest. Well, I think what we all came to, the session was, we will, we do want them to get a permit.
We issued permits with no fees.
But there's no fees on it.
But we have to change the ordinance.
Yeah, and so we need to do it procedurally correct to make sure it's done.
There's a lot more things need to be changed in that ordinance because for one, they're not allowed to sell on public streets. They're not allowed to sell SP, private property with permission. So they can't even get a permit to sell on public streets for our own ordinance.
And they're still calling them street barkers. I mean, let's change that.
We need to change the ordinance completely. Because I mean, we're issuing permits that aren't even legal.
It, it does say that we, under circumstances like the street fairs and if you read it a little further, it says.
Well, I read the whole thing, yes, I did. I'm saying, but I understand that. But we need to change it so it's not so.
Who, who do you want to take that on to update it?
I would say would be the, it's going to be a legal document. The attorney would have to rewrite the ordinance.
Okay. And, and that, I want you all to know, I don't just, I think it's a waste of time. And I tell the other city I represent, it's a waste of time for me to try to bang out an ordinance not knowing what y'all want. That's, that's a waste of your money and a waste of your time to come and say, oh, well, I've got this. And then you say, well, I didn't, I didn't, we didn't want that. I'm, I'd be just kind of stabbing in the dark to what you guys want. So I haven't, I guess what I'm saying is I haven't even began typing an amendment to the ordinance at all.
That's understandable.
Yes, sir.
It's my thinking that we, and I think we're all pretty much in agreement that our opinion and our wishes are that the, we waive the fee for any event that is being approved by the city clerk.
They still have to have a permit, they're not charged for it.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I'm thinking we were looking at festivals and events that benefited the entire community different from someone that comes in to sell their wares on Main Street for a short period of time.
Yes, it was geared towards the festival.
It was my understanding.
Now, understand, I know.
A draw for the, everybody.
I know during growing season and the summer times and stuff, I see maybe not in Carthage, but in other cities, municipalities, there are people that sell their own products, vegetables in the bed of their trucks or, you know, have a stand or something.
That's a positive thing.
Well, I just, I just wanted to add this to it. If this comes up in the future pursuant to the state statute, they don't have to be selling at a festival. If you're growing your own vegetables and you're selling your own vegetables, you are not required to pay that any type of permit fee. You can get a, I think you still have to get the permit, but you're not required to have to pay the fee regardless. So if they're, whether it's at an event or not, they don't have to pay a fee.
I think that was a great way to put it though. Something that's approved by the council, an event that's approved by the council that benefits the community, I think that's, that's as simple as it is.
That's how the ordinance needs to read. That's how the ordinance needs to read, take all that other godly view out of there.
I have a question on the market fest, it's Saturday, are they being charged for this?
Well, yes, because it wasn't officially changed, that, that's the problem. You, you can't, you can't amend the ordinance with a voice vote.
Walton Days, that they were, they were charged or not charged?
They brought the check in, and then a board member of, uh, the chamber called me and said, we can't use chamber money, because he was gonna pay it with chamber money, and he said, we can't use chamber money for this.
I understand that, I'm saying.
So, we had to give the check back.
Well, we, I'm sorry. Did they, so they did not pay for?
He attempted to, but couldn't use chamber money for it, yeah.
I feel like I have a, a kind of a moral problem with them not being charged for it in market fest.
Well, let's get the market fest, I mean, why are we targeting people?
Okay, well, I think we'll deal with that, but once, you've got to change it first, so.
But it's not gonna be changed before Saturday.
Yeah, can we?
We can do it in an emergency for this time.
Let me just tell you, most of these people already had these peddler's permits, and they had used it at Walton Day, and they're gonna use it again here. I think, I would say the majority have already. Yeah, yeah. But, but just, just a caveat here, understand, the reason this peddler, or whatever we want to call it, vendor's permit, it protects our businesses here in town, and that's, that's why it's so important to have this, because you can't just pull a truck up in front of somebody.
We're just not charging for it.
It really doesn't, though, the more businesses you have in town, the more draw you're gonna have to other businesses, but so, peddlers are, are, you know, it's a positive economic, that's not.
Not, not if you set up for, for three weeks in front of some, someone's store and start selling, that's what this.
We don't offer three, three-week events.
Events.
Well, no, no, but I'm saying, under this law, unless you had this, they could do that.
I don't think twenty dollars is gonna stop that.
Every single.
No, I'm not even talking about the fee, I'm just saying that's why this was set up.
Well, they still have to apply for their permits, we're making them get the permits, but I don't think twenty dollars is gonna stop them from doing that.
No, I'm in agreement with you, I don't, whatever you want to do with that, but it just, like, like our attorney said, it has to be procedurally the correct way, you can't, you can't, this is a law, it's an ordinance that's on our books, so you have to use an amendment, right, to the ordinance to change it, two readings.
We're all in agreement that, we understand we need to change the ordinance, but what Councilman Peters was saying is, we waived the fees for Walton Days, they did not pay the fees, he's wanting to waive the fees for this week's market fest.
That was my question, while.
Okay.
Well, my motion that we waive the fees for this event coming up.
Yeah.
So, that's the motion on table.
Well, again, you're asking procedurally to do something to an ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
We, we can, the committee can return the mon, okay, the committee can return the money, but it's not something procedurally here that you can just vote on.
This is, this is, it's obvious that.
I got a question.
Hmm.
It's obvious that it's gonna pass, because we, we want it to go away, so it's gonna happen. So, it just, it feels wrong that they had to pay anything, so if anything, why can we not refund them that?
Yeah, what do we all always agree?
Okay, okay, I think there are three people that we would have to refund, we'll be glad to do that.
Yeah.
We'll be glad to do that.
I'm not charged for that.
Okay, yes, sir.
Do they, did they say a booth fee for the, the market fest then? So, why don't we just apply the, waive the booth fees? Is, how much is booth fees, twenty dollars?
First of all, we got, okay.
That's not for the city. Who charges the booth fees? That's a private organization.
Let me, hold on just a second, please understand, we don't make money on this, but we have to have some working capital to bring in porta-potties, whatever we use. Look at, look at Walton Day, now, ours is twenty, Walton Day starts from sixty to a hundred and fifty. So, that's, that's the problem here, we're, we have a very nominal fee, twenty dollars a booth, everybody sponsors that.
I'm not saying that's bad, but what, my point is, we can't, you're not gonna say we can't waive this peddler's permit fee, but we can apply the booth fee to the peddler's permit fee and waive the booth fee for this one event, and then we can change the ordinance and everything is good.
Or, or we could just give three people their twenty dollars back.
Yeah, it's that, it's that simple, it's that, it's really simple, we can do that.
And then everything changes as soon as it's.
I think we need to deal with ordinance, if what, I think, well, you've got the attorney, what is it you want to change about the ordinance, I think that's the thing.
We, we had it to waive the fee for market fest or refund.
Wait a second.
Who's seconded that?
We got a motion to second to waive the fees, so.
I'm gonna pay for saving.
Who's seconded that, I'm sorry?
I made the motion to start with, I thought.
The motions are on, it's in seconds.
I'm gonna see now, since seeing.
I, I just have to, can we do this to an ordinance, through a voice vote, or does it not have to be a written amendment to the ordinance?
I mean, I guess you're kind of making a vote to enforce the amendment, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I guess if you're, if you're waiving the enforceability of it, and nobody's gonna go out and enforce it, I mean.
Well, she might.
And, and other, other counties are not enforcing it, we did discuss that other counties are not.
Well, no, some are, I, I mean, Wilson County.
And I guess the question is, are you authorizing the chief of police to go out and write people tickets if they don't have?
No, last time this happened, literally, she went out there asking people for money, like, we don't need the mayor enforcing things.
Well, I think it would fall on her chief's shoulders to enforce that.
She can enforce ordinance.
I think you've got things to do that day.
Okay, let's just get back to, do you, do you want to, to do an amendment to this ordinance, do you want the attorney to write it up and vote on it twice?
Let's do the first thing that's on here right now, the first thing on here was to waive the fees for market fest, so we got a, we got a first. We got a second. Or refund, waive the fees or refund.
Okay, we can do that, that's not, I'm, we'll do it.
We gotta vote on it. Let's vote on it.
Okay. All in favor?
Ah.
Okay, opposed. Now, let's, let's go to, what do we do to change this ordinance legally?
I've got a question.
If you change it, yes, sir?
How do we take an ordinance off the books? Now, we're talking, Steve, let's do that.
You do not want a peddler's permit, period?
I guess you're just gonna have to put it on the business and to rescind the ordinance to, you know.
Does that take two readings, or just take one?
Uh, I would need to ask about that, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I would need to ask about that, but I'm sure it's something that can't be done tonight.
No, no.
I was just, there was just a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we set a workshop where we can all work on that ordinance, because the attorney has said it would be, I agree with what he said.
Right.
About him trying to do it on his own.
Right.
So, if at some point, when it's convenient, probably after the holidays.
Can we do it before, while you have a meeting?
It doesn't matter to me when we do it, just a workshop, so that we could nail out some things that we want in there, going in there.
And how to repeal ordinance, is that a big work?
I might invite some of our businesses to be part of this.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Can I add something to the workshop?
Absolutely.
I'd like to add the personnel policy of the workshop, because that has never been completed. I was asked today about selling vacation, and that what we agreed to let them sell extra weeks, it's still not in there, so we got issues. So, we need to go over the personnel policy again, too.
Hmm, no, we'll have to bring M. Test.
I'm happy to do that, that could be a long meeting.
Yeah, kind of, just do it like the one thing.
Let's just do this right now.
And not come back for a special call meeting.
Well, it's gonna be special called anyway.
No, I would do it right before.
It's got about four meetings.
Right before a meeting.
I'm just feeling real special. It's a workshop, basically.
It's a workshop, it's not, it wouldn't be a special call meeting, we would just do the workshop to decide what we wanted in that.
Yeah, and I would add to that, that those, in the other city I represent, we do those, and it's, it's super helpful in more or less informal setting, so everyone can talk, and it helps me, because this don't, this, I'll be honest, this, this going back and forth and seconds and motions and all this, it, it don't help really drafting a motion, I mean, on an ordinance, because the formalities of it, it don't, it don't, it's not very helpful. So, those are very helpful to me.
Can we vote?
I'll amend the motion to add personnel policy.
Okay.
So, you want to have a workshop?
You want to amend it or rescind it?
After the holidays, though.
Rescind it, I'll rescind it, and we're going, we would like to have the workshop for the ordinance, um.
On peddler's permit.
On the peddler's permit, and the personnel policy.
Okay. Okay, do I, do I have a second to that one?
After the holidays.
Do I have a second to that new motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Uh, do you have a preference of a four meeting or separate from a meeting? Do you wanna?
The four meeting is fine with me.
Yeah, it's a four meeting, that sounds good to me.
So, we'll have it before a meeting, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Thank you, all right. The next section of this is, is a part of that, it's, you want to just skip over that?
Is it the privilege tax?
Is that the, is that the twenty dollar fee that we're talking about?
No, that's the fifty dollar privilege tax, let's just skip over that.
Okay. Oh, can we work on getting rid of this privilege tax?
Well, it's a state mandate, we're not even gonna deal with it here, so, uh, okay, the next item is the Rose Building, Attorney Mullins, and I guess Councilman Peters also wanted to address this.
So, I've been asked to look into, I think something that's kind of been lingering, and it's been lingering since previous attorney, about the issue of a business license for a building called the Rose Building. Um, I was told by the mayor that the occupiers and owners of the Rose Building operate a business, I'm gonna call it like a wedding venue, or rent out their space for, if you want to have an event, um, they have some type of, you know, event center there. Uh, I've been told that they, the owners of it live above the Rose Building, I don't know if it's full-time, part-time, I don't know, I don't know those details. But it's come to my attention that they have stated that they are not required to have a business license. I think they're here tonight, and they may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think their position is, from the state, that they've been told, uh, from the state, and they have also been given a letter from the state that states that they, that certain businesses in the state of Tennessee are not required to have a business license, and I think that they're holding that position under, uh, and my computer has went off.
Class three exemption.
Yeah, the class three exemption, under, I think it's sixty-seven, four, seven-oh-eight, um, C, and under C, it's got Roman numerals, uh, one, the Roman numeral one through, and again, my computer has, went off, so I'm gonna have to use my phone, but it's several exceptions, and, and one, I want to tell you what exactly the exception says that they're relying on. Give me just a second. Uh, I think it's, uh, Roman numeral twelve, operators of residential and non-residential buildings except hotels, motels, and rooming, rooming houses, I don't know what that is, but, um, so I think their position is, because they're operating a, a non-residential property under that section, they are not, um, they do not have to have a business license per se. Now, it comes down to if their business fits that definition. I don't, as I said here today, I'm not sure, I don't know that I'd find know enough facts to give you an opinion if their business fits that definition, and with that vague description, what that means, okay? I haven't, with the vague description in the statute, if their business fits that. Now, I would point out that we have, we did, Mayor Smith received a, um, email from Mr. Trout back in March the thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one, and most of the time I see some of these emails, and I have no clue what the question was asked, I just see the answer, so I don't know what the question was, but for this one, I do see the question that was asked, and the question, just so you know, so the, so the answer makes sense, just so everyone knows, for, just for me to read an answer, don't make any sense to me if I don't know the question that was posed. So, I'll read the question that, I, I don't know if y'all have seen that, but the question that was posed was basically, and it was a truthful question, and it seemed like the facts, as far as I know them, are correct, and Mr.'s, Mr. Trout's response was, uh, it's his opinion, because, um, the property is not leased to the same person for more than a hundred and eighty days, that they are required to have a business license. Now, it comes down to the next issue about taxes. I, I don't know if I told you all this in my interview or not, I don't profess to be a tax lawyer, I have no idea about taxes, I didn't take that class in law school, so if we're gonna get an opinion about taxes, I'm gonna have to rely on somebody other than myself. So, if, I guess the question being posed to me, or might have been posed to me, is, is it taxes being, you know, collected, or what, I, I don't, I don't know. But, my opinion, without any basis, I, I can't find any cases on this, okay? So, I, what we as lawyers do, we find, uh, things from Court of Appeals and definitions, you know, they explain to us what it means, I can't find anybody that's explained that portion, other than Mr. Trout has explained it. Now, is Mr. Trout, does he have any type of authority, would the court lean on him if it went to a, some type of judicial action? Possibly, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it would be up to the court to make some type of authority on it. With Mr. Trout's opinion here, and again, I haven't personally spoken to Mr. Trout, but with what I see, it would be my opinion that, uh, they probably would be required to have that business license, based upon what Mr. Trout says, and he's the, um, manager of Taxpayer Services Division out of Nashville, and that's his opinion, so.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, motion to suspend rules for five minutes.
For what purpose?
The, the owners of the Rose Building aren't here tonight, I think it behooves to listen to, listen to them a little bit about their business, since we're trying to classify a business, and we're really targeting a very specific business, for whatever reason, which goes on, I'd like to talk, I'd like to hear from them.
Well, I know, know that we're targeting, every business in town has a business license, so that's targeting, yes, sir?
I had a motion, I was waiting for the second.
Are you second, do you want a second? Okay, do you have something else?
I have another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to take this off the agenda. Um, if they're, if they're required to have a business license, the state will catch on to that, the state will figure it out if they need one, the state will want their taxes, so they'll go after them, I think we are.
I'll second you.
What, what, hold on just a minute, what are you, what did you?
I, I would, let me add something to you, okay? Back, back to, back.
He was in the middle of a motion, he didn't get to finish it.
I'm, I'm gonna try, I had a good thought going, it was like, poof, oh, sorry, man. I want to make a motion to take this off the agenda. The reason I want to take it off the agenda is, if they're required to have a, a business license or pay taxes, the state will catch on to that, that's up to the state to catch, that's not for a city to, to deal with that. So, take it off the, take it off our agenda, let them deal with the state, if the state says they have to have it, the state will make them get what they need to get.
Um, okay, we have motion, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I've talked to them as well, I, I'm under the, um, I, I feel like, from talking to them, that they're not even opposed to getting one, they just want to know if they're supposed to or not. So, I don't think anybody's evading anything, that's not, that's not how it's being presented to me, they just simply want to know, they're hearing two different things from two different sources. I don't think we should, especially on camera, portray them as, um, not wanting to follow the law, I don't think that's right. So, I, I think, I'm in agreement.
Can I add one thing? I did speak to, I think it was the owner, I, and her name's leaving my mind at the moment, because I'm so terrible with names. I did speak to her yesterday, and she did state what you said, Jesse, they're not evading. I think she actually did, this is what she told me, did come to the city hall to try to obtain a business license, and they told her they couldn't give her one, because they did not know how to classify her business.
That's, that's, that is the point of this, like.
Wait, wait, just a minute, Scott, could you address that, please?
I was just asking the question, when did that being occurred?
When did that, when did that occur?
October of twenty twenty, and then Dr. Dude came up with an ordinance, he was gonna do an ordinance, and you guys shot it down as unconstitutional?
Yep.
Or violation of our rights to assembly?
I'm not sure what, we're a little lost here, but if you want to just get a license, that's all we're asking, is just to get a license.
There is no license to give.
That's what I'm saying, I made the motion to take it off the table and just leave it alone.
Let's vote.
Well, hold on just a minute, I do need to, because our building, our building inspector has weighed in on this also, because there's no application for a business permit or business license, he cannot go in and inspect to make sure this is a safe place as far as ingress, egress, uh, adequate safety measures.
So, what are we worried about?
He's right, we have our occupants.
Well, no, that was our fire chief, uh, and, and that's something the city has to make sure that is done correctly, and yes, we, we are the people who are supposed to be giving business license for every business who wants to open up here, that is the city's job.
Oh.
Well, it is, yes.
Call the question.
Second.
I'd like to vote.
Let me, let me help you with one more thing on this, while you're, while you're, while this is on the table, and I think this will help you guys.
It's not anymore.
Well, we're doing a legal thing here, so, let's just listen to what he has to say, it's important.
We call the question, is the legal thing, if we're following Rockford rules of order?
Okay, um, if we vote something that we can't legally do, go right ahead.
That was what I was.
All we're voting on is to take it off the agenda and leave it alone, we can legally do that.
Um, well, somebody, somebody has to enforce this, and the city, this, actually, let me.
As much as I'd like to discuss this further, there was a call to question, so you must have a vote on that, that's procedural, and I'd love to talk more about it, but that's what happened, let's do it.
Very honestly, this is not even a legislative matter, this is a city enforcement matter, and it's come before the legislative body, but it is not a legislative matter, it's a city enforcement matter.
You don't have anything to enforce, you're making up rules, you're making up laws, you can't, you're trying to create.
We called the question, let's quit talking about.
All right, all in favor of taking this off the table, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we will take it off the table for right now, thank you. Thank you.
Any opposed? Ask for it.
Any opposed?
Should ask that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Jesse.
Okay, the next issue here is, okay, Attorney Counsel Communications. Councilman Babcock.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, we have Resolution CR 202-11104B. You have that in your package.
Second. I'll read it.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to explain why.
Okay.
The reason this, this is in here is if, we've got six individuals in here. I don't care if you call the attorney, it doesn't bother me. But let us know that what questions we're asking attorneys, so that you don't call them, and Barbara doesn't call them, and Jesse and Bill. We all call them the same question, and we're giving Bill $900 for the same question. That's why that's in there. Not saying you can't call them, but just let the rest of us know.
That's not how that reads, though.
Not reads to me.
All I gotta say on this is, we go on this, you'll be getting litigation from me on this, because this is so like, left field. Like, you can't tell some, you can't tell a city council member that they can't speak to the city attorney.
That's not what it says.
That's not how it reads.
Read it.
So, I welcome your litigation. No individual member of the council has authority to contact the city attorney for legal advice about a city matter without all members. Okay, well, let's talk about it. You said it didn't say that, and I'm reading that it does say that.
Without all members, I think.
Without all members. You have to let us, all I'm saying is, hey, email. I'm contacting the attorney on this problem. We can't discuss it, but we won't be calling him with the same question. But I'm saying this, I'm trying to save the city money.
As a council, we don't need to be running up additional.
Right. Exactly. That's, that's what this is about. I'll go ahead, and if you all are worried about money, saving the council money, I'm, I'm right there with you. This is right here, this is where the month, the bill's coming from. Now, I don't know what y'all's bills are. My bill's pretty, pretty much zero. The last attorney, I think, there was a little bit of a bill on. But this one's been zero for me. I don't know what y'all's bill is, but I can tell you for a fact, the main bill that's coming is right here. Maybe we ought to put a resolution limiting the contact that the mayor can do with the attorney. That'd be nice.
We do have day to day.
Just saying.
Type it up.
That's a day to day thing. The mayor does have to have, to run the city, has to have.
Day to day for me, too.
But what they're saying here, I, I'm interpreting this that if, if one person has information outside of a council member, all of these people should have that same information.
What happens if a business is being harassed by a mayor? Can the council members call? You know, I mean, that, that's a day to day thing.
I think you're missing, you're missing that you still have the, the opportunity, just like all of us, to call Attorney Mullins. We all have that ability. We still have that under this. Under this, though, we would receive, my understanding is, an email from, from the attorney that says, I got this question, this is my answer. And I think, with all due respect, I think we already had this under the former attorney. We were already said, we want to know when anybody calls.
Is that not being done?
I'm, well, not, I'm not getting anything.
Okay, because I haven't gotten anything from anybody either, so.
Well, see, what, what you're looking, you're taking this on your shoulders. Don't look at it as a coeval thing.
I'm not taking it on my shoulders at all. I'm looking at it as, I mean, a civil liberties thing, of elected commit, of person that's an elected official, you can't deny them access.
It says right there that all of us are certified.
You're denied access. How do you see that?
We just.
We just went from trying to abolish resolutions, now we're creating something like, I have zero issues. I think that anytime someone contacts, any one of us contact the attorney, he should absolutely let us know. I don't think we need a, a resolution for it. I thought that was already being done. Is that not being done?
I think this was voted on back in April, but it had to be a resolution rather than.
And then we had to do a resolution, that's why it's now.
So why isn't this being done at all?
I don't know. I'm gonna call the question so we can vote.
Okay, the question, the question has been called. All in favor of the question? Aye, please.
Do y'all mind if I?
All in favor of the question? Aye, are, okay, all opposed? Okay, question has been called. All in favor of the motion, of the resolution? Say aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed.
I'm opposed because I like to read things before I vote on them.
Well, this was sent out in the package.
Yeah, well, I thought we were gonna have one more discussion on that. Well, that's cool.
Okay. Okay, second reading of ordinance CO 202-11013-2. This is the updating of the, our building, our building code to 2018, which is all, all the cities have to do, because they're only good for, what, seven years? Seven years. So ours has to be updated. In addition to this reading, there is a slight amendment that we're asking. Dr. Duke from the Planning Commission has asked to put on it, too. So, but that's, that's into new business.
Can I interject just a second?
Sure, go ahead.
I did invite Lynn here, because I know that you had asked for that. He could not be here. He is also on the school board member, a school board member, I think, in Putnam County. So that's why he's not here.
Can we move this to new business?
Sure, sure.
Number two on there, we'll just wrap that into one.
Just motion that, put them together?
Yeah.
Just put one right over the other. Okay, sure.
That's my motion.
Okay, we're gonna move, the motion is to move the reading, second reading, up to just before the first reading of number two. So we could, it would become number two and the other's number three then. Any, did I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's moved to number two on new business. Thank you. Okay, Turkey Creek Water Pump Station, we've already talked about that. Okay, flag, flagpoles. Derek is looking at ordering those lights, okay?
Well, what, the last motion I made was to be presented with what kind of lights they're gonna be, all that. Like, I know you're saying solar, but, I mean.
Derek, do you have anything to add? They're all under $2,000, so they can get, order them themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the best solar flagpole light that I can find.
Yeah, and there's four of them, so it's all under $2,000. It's, it's in there.
I think there's five.
Well, one's not working.
Yeah, just what I would suggest, if I can make a suggestion, talk to Jerry Solamini with American Legion, as far as like, I know it sounds silly, but there's, there's flag, there's flag code, there's loot, there's a certain amount of light that has to be put on it, kind of deal like that. If you don't mind, just check in with him. I'll shoot you his contact information just to make sure it's. All right, thank you, Derek.
Who is this then? Is this a business? Okay, we'll move on then to number eight, Retired Employees Health Insurance. Councilman Babcock, are you addressing that?
We had a special, I guess what special was it called? That's called meeting, or was it workshop?
Workshop.
I think myself and Councilman Evil were there. And CMFO Scott Yzel gave us the, the amount of money it was gonna cost to pay for the retired person's insurance up to the age 65. I don't have the exact number. I think it was right around $11,000 in the next. Do you have those numbers with you, Scott?
I do. But the first step was to get the actuarial.
That, that was your suggestion?
Yeah. Yes, it was.
Yes. I don't think we need to spend that money. I think your numbers are spot on. I think we would go with that. And what we, what we had talked about was, reach 25 years of service, we pay 50% of your health insurance at age 65. At 30 years, we pay 100%. Is that, do mine?
Yeah, we, it was a.
We were gonna do it 20.
We ran into a lot of details on that.
Yeah, so.
And it was gonna cost $11,000.
For the ones coming up that retire, according to the, the numbers that he ran. He, he ran all the.
Every year, or?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
Can Scott explain as far as that?
Most should suspend the rules.
Most should suspend the, the rules.
Second.
All in favor of suspending rules?
We're like repeating.
Any opposed? Okay.
I, I was gonna ask if Scott could explain to us that, the way that study works, because that study may help benefit us quite a bit in the long term, so we don't get on just some runaway benefit plan. I think we can get a good benefit plan for our city employees and be able to project and forecast what's coming forward down the road. It's gonna attract better employees, too. So I think it's, I think it's worth hearing, at least.
Okay, I will summarize the, the workshop. You have two issues that you've got to pay attention to. One is, what is the actual cash flow that goes out each year? It's to pay for the retirees. The second issue is something we can't change, have no influence over, because it comes from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And it says that if you make a decision that you're gonna cover your employees this way, then we have to take the full demographic, meaning all your employees, and we have to project out for a number of years, 20, 25 years, what that expense would look like. And that becomes what's called other post-employment benefit liability, okay? What that means is, on your financial statement, it's posted as a liability for the future years that you may cover somebody, okay? That's the part that could, I say could, have a negative impact moving forward. Because what I recommended was, and it is, I've researched it and got approval, that we can do it. If we set a cash flow out, a cap, that we would not cover any more than $60, $50, $40, or $150, okay? Whatever that annual cap is, and put it in our budget, that would be the most cash flow expenditure we would be exposed to. But at any point in time, we can say, hey, we're done with that, okay? The major possible negative impact, okay, is the long-term liability that is posted on your books. The reason that's important is, if you need to borrow money, okay, that is something that's considered as a potential liability, even though it may never come to fruition. But that's the way the accounting world, world works. What I wouldn't recommend is saying, we're not gonna have any kind of cap on it, okay? Because 10 years from now, if you had 20-something employees, which is not gonna happen, because I've already projected who can do this, if you make it 25 years, in, if you say 50%, in year one, 22 possibility would be, and this is if, if people retire, okay? Maximum exposure cash flow is $22,380. From 25, 2025 to 2027, it'd be $27,930. And for 2028 to 2032, the maximum exposure would be $23,275. That's cash flow. But that is a non-actuarial cash flow, based on me looking at who we got, okay? When an actuarial firm comes in, they're gonna look at all the employees, because they have to, regardless of how long they've been here. They're gonna assume they're gonna be here for 25, 30 years. And they're gonna accrue an other post-employment benefit liability, as if we were gonna have to cover that, because we committed to, to doing that. That is the negative to it, okay?
Can I ask you?
Yes.
So if we put a cap at $30,000, that will reach us from doing that liability that you're saying? Is that correct?
That would be the, most we would spend money on, okay? But we, but we would book on our books, okay? For general fund and water sewer, it's not so, on the general fund as it is the water sewer, okay? Because that's gotta be a profit. You would book.
The 30,000?
As an actual cash flow expenditure, but then you're gonna have to put down as a liability, okay, and a projected expense for those number of years that are 25 years out, okay? That's just gonna be a, that's an accounting thing. We're not gonna change that. We can't do that. It's a Governmental Accounting Standards Board criteria.
And this is for all employees, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But the cash flow is always king. Cash flow is what, we don't want to get added to an unknown number every year. But with our demographic, it'd be 10 years before we'd even begin to think about it, if you're looking at 25 to 30 years requirement.
Right, so.
But to get the most expert opinion about it, we'd have an actuarial analysis done, okay?
And what was the cost of that, again?
Uh, I think it'd be $6,000 to $10,000. Because you've got a, it's a complex little deal, okay?
So even if we put the cap on it, if I'm understanding, we still have this negative thing on our books that all of our employees have, we have to say all of them will be covered.
That they would theoretically, all of them could, would potentially, whenever they reach 25 years of service, that they would, we would be funding it.
And if that puts us in a negative kind of way, that would be harmful, is what you're saying?
It would be harmful if we tried to borrow money, uh, because we have a lot higher liabilities out there. But they'd be long-term liabilities. Real world, my gut sense is it wouldn't be a big thing, other than the paperwork on the long-term liability. But it is a real important thing, okay, to make sure we understand. You do this, it's not just the year's cash flow. It could have a negative impact on the financial statements, because you gotta accrue out this.
What would be the benefit, if we could pay the money, of getting the actuarial study? Would that give us some wiggle room to lay it out on them, rather than us, if there's a problem, or how would that, how does that?
What it would give us is an idea of the impact it would have on our financial statements. And why that would be important is, we're doing these capital projects over the next five to 10 years. We're gonna have to borrow some money if we go through with them, okay? And that would be the negative ramifications of that approach, based on our demographic. And when people are gonna be eligible in the year, uh, we've got five. The most we'd have is six in the next, between now and 2032. So if you've covered 50%, that's $23,000 at the existing rate. But remember, that premium's gonna go up every year. But so if you set a cap on it, you know how much, that's as most we're gonna do, okay? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we set a cap on it at $30,000 that will fall in line with his number for the number of people retiring. And at 25 years of service, we pay 50% of the insurance. At 30 years, we pay 100% of retired person's insurance up to the age of 65, when they reach Medicaid age.
I'll second that.
You know, I'm gonna make you repeat that.
Is there any, is there any? Is there any maximum age? Could it start at 55, if somebody's been here 30 years?
25 years. It starts at 25 years of service.
Question is, okay, what if they worked for South Carthage for 10 years?
25 years of service for the city of Carthage.
Okay.
That, that.
But let's say someone starts at 20, and at 55, or 45, they've, they've reached their 25 years. Do we continue if they retire?
Until the age that they can receive the governmental benefit, yes.
Basically, we're offering coverage between 55 and 65. So it's 10-year coverage area.
Yeah, somewhere, but most of them that've been here for.
45.
Years are probably gonna leave when they don't even use it.
And it gives them that extra five-year incentive.
Yes.
So that way, you know.
You stay five years, you get your healthcare paid for.
You get it 100%.
That's effectively what you're saying, because anybody that come in after 2014 is under the hybrid system, and they can't retire until they get age 60. And then you're looking at, and they have to be a part of TCRS before they can even, before we can do this.
Right.
Receiving a retirement check.
Yes.
So that decreases it.
We set a, I'm, I'm just gonna repeat this for her, so you write it down. We set a cap at $30,000 per year. Anyone with service to the city of Carthage, or the town of Carthage for 25 years, will have their retirement insurance paid at 50%. Over 30 years, it'll be paid at 100%, up until the age of 65 or Medicare. Because someone could become disabled, and then they could get Medicare earlier.
Okay.
Or the law could change and Medicare age go down.
Yes, until the age of Medicare, not just the, that number.
Thank you. Then who seconded that?
I did.
That's.
It was me.
Did y'all get that?
May I, may I interject something else that you may want to amend the motion? We would have to decide, how are we going to pay that? Meaning, are we going to reimburse them directly, okay? Or are we gonna get involved with paying it directly to the state? My recommendation is, we let the employee or retiree pay their premiums, and we would reimburse them. That way, we're directly dealing with the retiree.
Yeah, makes sense. Do you want to amend the motion to that?
Okay, I'll amend the motion to, at the end, that we will be paying the employee the money for the premium. Their, their responsibility is to pay the state for the insurance.
Okay, the amendment is that it goes to the employee who's responsible for paying. I hear second. Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Now, going back to the main motion with the amendment, any further discussion on that? Any, any taviots, anything?
Call to order, or call to question?
We have two persons.
Call to question.
Let's vote.
Okay, well, all in favor of the question?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the question's been called, all in favor of the motion with amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay. Would you read the approved motion for me?
Yeah, let, let me ask you, does this have to be a resolution rather than a straight voice motion? Do you, do you say, since we're just talking about using money, do we have to have?
I believe we can address it in the personnel policy, when we review the personnel policy.
I think that'd probably be the appropriate thing to do.
They'd be in the benefits section of the personnel policy.
I don't think it'd be a law, I think it'd be a resolution, because we can change it.
Right, okay.
Next meeting.
But, but just a straight voice vote, I don't think you can do that on money, but, okay, all right, thank you.
I wanna hear it from the recorder.
Okay, what's, what's the motion?
Thanks, Scott.
We aim to please, sister.
Yeah, I know what you're doing. Councilman Babcock made a motion to set the cap for $30,000 a year for any employee that's been at the town of Carthage 25 years at 50%, 30 years at 100%, up until Medicare age.
Okay.
And then it's the amended motion.
With the amended portion to reimburse directly to the employee.
Okay, great, thank you.
You thought you got me there, didn't you?
All right, all right, the next order of business is, we're tabling the purchasing policy till next time, because Scott's still working on that, so let's table. Okay, we're moving up, the second reading of ordinance CO 202-11013-2, updating to the 2018 building code, we, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on that first, and then there's an amendment Dr. Duke wants to introduce to that.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna tell people how to be building their houses, it's their property.
Well, it's, it's, it's a standard international code, so it's.
The size of their insurance, policies and premiums, pay for that house if it burns down.
Yeah.
And I have a problem with that.
So, okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of adopting the 2018 as our resolution? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, passes, then, Dr. Duke, you have.
Motion to approve, the first reading of the ordinance number CO 202-1104. Does that say that, I don't, okay, there's one, I was trying to figure what that was.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Duke, you wanna explain, or you just, we just go for it?
Well, it's pretty clear, this, this, I will say that I think this was on the, this was, this was something that was, I think, was passed, but I just could not find it was passed with the 2012 that they had.
It was, it was explained well.
Right.
Okay, all right, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
So that passes on. Then we go to COVID bonus. Did you think that?
Yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
I make a motion that we offer each city employee a $2,500 bonus out of the COVID money, because there's certain areas that we're allowed to spend that money, and one of them is essential pay. Our employees work every day, did it at home, didn't work from home, out there with the public, risk their lives every day. The money can be used for that. I make a motion that we give each $2,500.
Can I just tell you, we did go home for five days, we did work from home, but some of the office, I just want you to be.
I'm, I'm making the motion to pay, the mayor.
So you used your own facility?
We did, but I just wanted it to be clear, because a few of us in office.
I think everyone deserves to do their work, so, I'm making that motion.
So, yes, sir, did I hear a second, first of all, then we'll have a discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, Scott, did you wanna?
Got to suspend the rules in order for him to talk.
Okay.
What, when did COVID end? Which employees are you talking about? Because we're gonna have to know which, where to stop.
I'd like to amend my motion to any employees that were working on the payroll as of, what, May of 2020 till present. And currently still employed.
Okay, it's amended to May of 2022, the current, do I hear a second to that?
There was a second.
That's in the amendment.
Oh, sorry, second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment?
Real quick, how many employees we got?
31.
77,500.
So that's the money that, again.
That they deserve, and that's what the money's for.
It's, it's not about that, it's not about, it, it's not about.
First of all, we need to, we've, we've got a second on the amendment, right?
We're in discussion.
I just wanna make sure we're doing this right.
Okay. It's not about that, it's not about anything, I very love our employees, but this is being footed by taxpayers. This is, we had mandatory shutdowns that our government put in place, our city tried to have things put in place on us, too. We're not getting $2,500 bonuses from our companies, it's just, it's not, that's not realistic in, in any of this. You know, the COVID money can be spent to make things easier for people, you know, laptops at home if that happened. But I mean, we're seeing the long-term effects of this COVID, and I think this is just a, you know, this, with this money, this COVID money could be better spent to help out the taxpayers here. Again, that's no pun towards employees or anything like that, but I, I was elect to buy the taxpayers.
Yes, ma'am.
Just in hearing from other folks, this is not unusual, that a lot of elected officials and workers are getting that bonus, because not only were they at risk, yeah, not only were they at risk, they had to get additional training for how they.
Sanitation, cleanliness, everything.
Yeah, so there was a lot added to their position during that time.
Now, also, the $2,500 would be, the vice right, of course, they take out taxes and it ends up $2,100.
Yeah, it's not, there's gonna be, there's normal pay, there's gonna be taxes taken out of it.
You don't get $2,500, you just got $21 or something like that.
Okay, any further discussion on that? And is there a timeline on when this would be paid, or do you have?
ASAP, as soon as the checks can be written.
And it would come out of the COVID money that we just got, is that forward?